To order the Tuesday, March 6, 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Roll call please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We have the invocation to be offered by Pastor Robert Allen from Grace Point Church. Thank you for being here Pastor. To be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Supervisor Valadez. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God, you have taught in your word that you love mankind more than we know or understand. We believe that you are involved in the affairs of mankind so that you might be glorified and that you might seek our good even here in Arizona's Pima County. In seeking the good of the people of Pima County, these supervisors, as your servants, partner with you. The level of importance and impact of the things they consider today will vary, but I pray that every item on their agenda will be handled wisely. I pray for this board, that each man and woman will be a good listener to the constituents of their district so that they may know the needs, convictions, and preferences of the people they represent. But I pray too that they, each one, will humbly seek and listen to you, the ultimate voice of wisdom, understanding, and faithfulness and love. I'm thankful for each of the members of this board, that they're willing to devote time and energy in their important tasks in serving their district. I pray for their safety, health, and strength of each member of the board, Sharon Bronson, Ally Miller, Ramon Valadez, Steve Christie, and Richard Elias, and for the protection of their families. I pray that each one will be sterling in integrity and for the strength to remain true to their principles and convictions, ethics, and morals in the midst of a culture where that kind of integrity is increasingly rare. And finally, I pray for your guidance in the deliberations today, that they may be conducted in an atmosphere of humility and respect and for the good of the people of Pima County. In the name of our Lord who loved us and showed us in his life and death what personal sacrifice and commitment for others really looks like. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor. Appreciate you coming down here, spending your time here with us. We have one change to today's agenda. On page six, item three of the consent calendar, we have the funding source changed there. It should read Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Hearing no objections, we'll consider those to be the changes to today's agenda. And we have pause for pause, but I didn't see a dog. I wasn't looking at you Andy. I know we got a couple other dogs. Couple of dogs back here. No, I'm sorry about that. But we're going to go on then to our presentation because it's about two dogs too, Luke and Lea, and then they have a special visitor, their brother Leo. So let's bring those dogs up here and maybe you can tell us a little bit about the Comfort Canine Program and its role with the Crisis Response Canine Program.
[inaudible]
Okay, we'll get to that in a few minutes then.
Good morning everybody. My name is John Dickson.
Excuse me, we need you to talk into the microphone for the record. Please, thank you.
Good morning everybody. My name is John Dickinson. This is Daniel Conrad and we've got Sean Deegan here. We're with the Sheriff's Department and we are putting together a new program where we are actually bringing these little pups here. We've got Officer Luke and Lea and we're bringing them into the jail. And what they're going to be doing is they're going to be comfort canines. Their job is going to be to mitigate stress and hopefully decrease tension in the jail setting. We're going to be using them proactively in housing units. We're going to be entering housing units and allowing inmates to have contact when these dogs are certified. It's going to take a little longer for them to get certified. But they're actually going to be entering the housing units and interacting with inmates and hopefully bringing the stress down in the jail. Maybe we can alleviate some of the tension we've got there. Obviously if... Thanks sir. This is Dominic and I, he's my partner as well. You know, if anybody knows anything about a jail, they're pretty stressful places. So what we're trying to do with this program is we're just trying to bring a little bit of normalcy to people's lives while we're there. So far, we've had some amazing results with bringing these guys in. Like I said, we're not allowed to bring them into contact with inmates yet, but we have been bringing them into the housing units and we have been interacting with staff. And I've seen an amazing response. I've seen more smiles in the last two and a half weeks since we've had these dogs there than I've seen in the entire 12 years that I've worked at the jail. So it's really neat. We've got people crowding the doors, waiting to see the dogs when they come in to work. We've got inmates, when we walk through the housing units and the inmates are locked down, we've got inmates looking over each other's shoulders through their windows to see the dogs. We've had nothing but positive responses in the jail so far. We've had people in the public tell us that this is a great program, this is what we should be doing, this is the future of policing. We've got people telling us that this is going to be breaking down barriers between the public and between the Sheriff's Department. So all of these things are things that we're working on. The programs for the pups is going to be called CPAS. So it's an acronym for Corrections Pet-Assisted Stress Therapy. And we are, as far as I know, one of the first in the country to have officers doing a program like this. So it's very innovative and very new. Right now, I'm just going to see if anybody has any questions about it. We're all very excited about it. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question.
Supervisor Bronson?
But I just, I think this is a great program and I know in our juvenile facility, we bring in dogs, or dogs are brought in through Gabriel's Angels and the juveniles in detention are able to interact with them. And it's made an amazing difference in just the atmosphere. So I'm glad to see you guys are doing this. And Lea, is that, is she the namesake of Princess Lea? Okay.
Yes, she is. Luke and Lea are the names that were voted on by the public. They were actually Star Wars names, pretty obviously for anybody that follows those movies. And Leo here is working, excuse me, oh, Leo here is working with the mist unit for the Sheriff's Department. And he's going to be doing a lot of the same stuff we are. They're going to be interchangeable. One of the things I haven't mentioned is we're actually going to be working within the community as well. And all three of these dogs are going to be getting out into the community and they're going to be, for example, if we had a crisis situation in the community, they would be able to respond to that situation. We have other things that we're going to be working on where they may help with child advocacy stuff, things like that. There are so many positive benefits to this program that we haven't even discovered yet that we're learning every day as we go through it. And I just wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to come introduce the program. Yes, sir?
Yeah, what's the cost?
Oh, excuse me, sir. You need to use the microphone and you need to state your name for the record. No, you can come up here, I guess.
Yes, my name's Roger Score and my question B is what's the cost to the community for this program, the financial burden?
Thank you for your question, sir. The cost to the community, most of the, actually the dogs were paid for by a group called Simpatico. And Simpatico is one of the groups that we work with, which is a leader in bringing mental health entities together in the community to basically make the mental health community a little more seamless and make it work a little better. So they believe that this program is going to be a benefit to the community. So they've paid for the dogs and they've paid for a lot of equipment through the grant, through a grant that they've given us. So that's a really nice thing. So it's going to turn out to not quite cost the actual community much and hopefully it brings a lot more to the community than the cost. Yes, sir?
You can get a dog for free. It still costs you a lot of money. Now what's, like, you've got four officers standing here right now, that's costing the community money when we're short on sheriff's staff. I want to know, what's the cost through all the training, upkeep of the dogs, vet bills, everything else, housing of them? There's a liability always with having a dog. And what's that cost to the community, the total cost?
Okay, I don't have that answer for you, but I can tell you that they're coming home with us, they're being trained by us. Okay, go ahead.
Please identify yourself for the record.
I'm Lieutenant Elson Navarro. I'm actually the commander over this program at the jail. The Sheriff's Department is very much invested in this program and we actually have taken into consideration the costs and all of that stuff and we feel that the benefit far outweighs the cost. Either way, these staff members already work at the jail and they have been doing part of their job in addition to the dog training. So it's not costing us anything extra to have this program. In addition, everything, including the dog training and some of the equipment, has been covered by this grant, so it's not costing us an exorbitant amount. It was a generous gift on their part and we appreciate it wholeheartedly.
Thank you Lieutenant. Appreciate you being here.
Actually, I have one more thing I'd like to say. Jeremy's with us today and he's our dog trainer and he's done an amazing job for us and we owe him a lot. He is, he is. He's done great for us. Thank you, sir.
Albert Lannan, the question hasn't been answered. How much is the grant for and how long is it for? Dollars and cents?
Detective Sean Deegan with the Sheriff's Department Mist Unit. The grant was for, it was actually a gift. It was a gifted thing from Simpatico towards us. It was $10,000. And that grant has covered the purchase of all the dogs, it's covered the training for all the dogs for the first year, it's covered all of the vet bills for the first year, all of the equipment to house the dogs, all their food has all been covered by this grant. And it is for one year, renewable, which we're going to be applying for again. I believe it's up in May, I think is when the grant is up again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all being here today and if you could hand that microphone back to us, that would help us. Makes it a little safer.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the dogs wants the mic.
I can't blame them for speaking up and wanting to get out. But no luck, doggy, you've got to stay here with us. Thank you all. Let's give them a nice round of applause. I'm doing a tour of the jail next week, so I look forward to seeing you all over there. Good, good. Let's do pause for pause quickly. We have a dog that came in and his name is Capri. And we're so glad you made it. So thank you if you'd... You've got to turn it on though, okay? You got that? Thank you.
Okay. We're glad we made it too. All right, so I'm Investigator Code at the Pima Animal Care Center. I actually brought along our newest APS supervisor as well, Christina Snow.
Hello everyone. As she said, I'm Christina Snow. I am the new field sergeant for Pima County. I came from Austin where I was a field training supervisor there for about five years. So animal control is just what I know, what I love, and hopefully we see some big changes out here in Pima County because we need it. And we brought this gem that I just met this morning, so I will pass the mic.
All right, so Capri came to us February 20th. She actually had a really bad case of tick fever and we didn't actually think she was going to make it, but obviously she pulled through. Our clinic staff did a really good job. She's actually become one of our staff favorites as well. She loves everyone. Apparently she's good with other dogs as well, I'm not sure about cats, but she's definitely one of our favorites. She, she loves to cuddle, she loves belly rubs, that's one of her favorite ways to fall asleep. She'll just cuddle up right on your lap and as long as you're rubbing her belly, she's happy. But she really likes to meet everyone and will follow you around for hugs and kisses. So she's really cute, I really love her. She's super sweet and if I had room at home, I'd take her myself. But we also have an event this weekend. Let me see, sorry. At the Pets Mark on Oracle and Wetmore this Saturday from 10 to 2:00. We have an adoption event there, but we're also doing Stuff the Trunk, which is also going to benefit homeless veterans and at-risk veterans and their pets. So they're accepting donations, any kind of food, bedding, toys, blankets, bowls, any of that kind of thing. But we're also having animals there for adoption as well. So definitely come check that out. And if anyone here is interested in Capri, she is ready to go to her forever home now. She's finally cleared from the clinic, so she's actually going on the adoption floor today.
Thank you very much. Looks like a librarian dog to me Karen, what do you think? You might want to mention that to any of the workers over there at the library that you run into, that there's a nice dog named Capri, kind of like a cosmopolitan European name for a pet dog, you know?
The Isle, yes, the Isle.
So anyways, thank you for coming over. Appreciate your time.
Sure, thank you very much.
Very good. I'll take that back. Thank you. All right, we're going to move to executive session because we have a number of executive sessions on today's agenda. So we're going to do call to the audience after that. Were any of the cards on the call to the audience regarding any of our executive session items?
Chairman, they did not appear to be.
I'll move to convene an exec.
Motion and a second to convene an executive session. Any objections? Hearing none. We'll be back in a while. We've got five or six issues that we need to hear, so it is going to be a little bit, okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Are we going to be hearing the case that I have a conflict with first or last?
Yes.
First?
Actually not, because we have another person who needs to leave quickly. So we'll just ask to...
Do it last?
Yeah, when your exec just asked me.
That's fine, we can ask you to excuse yourself then. Thank you Supervisor Miller.
Thank you.
We'll be back at the sound of the gavel.
I'd like to call back to order.
The March 6th of 2018 Meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We've been in executive session just having a load of fun listening to lawyers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thought you'd appreciate that, counsel. Counsel, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item seven involves Raytheon.
I'm going to ask Supervisor Miller to excuse herself in the room. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please continue, counsel. It's okay.
Item seven on the regular agenda involves Raytheon Company versus Pima County and Bill Staples, Arizona Tax Court Case Number TX201700465. This item was for information only. Item one on the addendum agenda involves a claim with the Hartford related to the county's former operations at the El Camino del Cerro landfill. The county administrator and county attorney's office recommend proceeding as discussed in executive session.
I'll move the county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Any objections?
I object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item two on the addendum agenda involves the Board of Supervisors authority and process regarding petitions for redemption of waiver under ARS Section 42-11153B. This item was for information only. Item three on the addendum agenda involves Pima County versus Craycroft River Holdings LLC et al., Pima County Superior Court Case Number CE20162388. The parties are recommending a settlement of $14,500 in total just compensation for all property being acquired in this case. County Attorney's Office recommends approval of the proposed settlement.
Move county attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item four on the addendum agenda involves a request from Rusing Lopez and Lizardi to for the Board to waive a conflict of interest to allow Rusing Lopez and Lizardi to represent Pima County and to represent clients in the following two unrelated matters that are adverse or potentially adverse to the county. Court of Appeals Division Two, Case Number 2CA-CV2017-0180, Paradigm DKD Group LLC versus Pima County et al., and Arizona Supreme Court CV17-0374-PR-TKG Elcon versus Honorable Witten Staples et al. County Attorney's Office recommends approving the waiver.
Move to waive.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive conflict of interest. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're done with executive sessions. We're on to call to the audience.
Five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted it to be over so bad. Nothing personal. No, I'm just kidding. It is. Item five, please.
Number five wasn't us, anyway. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item five on the addendum agenda involved outside counsel, and my understanding is that I must for information only.
That's correct. Thank you very much, counsel. Appreciate all your work, all your focus.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done with executive session now, and we're going to move on to call to the audience. And I'd ask you to be brief and to not be repetitive, but we appreciate all of the time that you're spending here with us. Our first speaker is going to be my good friend, Ron Barber. Congressman, please come forward. We'll give you three minutes to just give us hell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county administrator, my name is Ron Barber. I live in 4848 East Hawthorne in Tucson, and I'm here today in my role as the president of the January Memorial Foundation to thank the board, to thank the county staff for all that they have done to help us get to the point where we've got the money to build the memorial, and it will be construction, I believe, will start some by towards the end of this year or maybe early next year. This has by and large been funded by private donations from our community and from corporations and foundations, and we're really pleased with the response. I want to just very briefly say what we're doing. This memorial is dedicated to the people who died, including two federal officials, Judge Rolle and my deputy, Gabe Zimmerman, and to the others who were wounded and died. It's to the EMTs, the first responders, the people, just ordinary citizens who came to our aid. It's dedicated to the medical staff at UMC and to a community that embraced us with compassion and support during our recovery and still do. And it's also, Mr. Chairman, I just want to close with this. It's dedicated to the notion that when people are elected to public office, no matter what level it is, they should be accessible to the people that they serve. And that's what Congresswoman Giffords was doing that morning in her 21st Congress on your corner. She was meeting individually with constituents to hear their concerns as she had done many times before. And that is really what we're saying in the end this memorial is about. It's a dedication to the process of public participation in our political system. It's dedication to transparency and accountability by public officials, and we really want to make sure that future generations of children and adults see not only that we're dedicating it to the people who we lost and who were wounded and the others, but also as a really remember it so of how important it is that public officials are open and accessible to the people they serve. And with that, I thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, Ron. Glad you could be here with us today. Appreciate your patience while we were out. Our next speaker is going to Our next speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Steve, thank you for being here today, and please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Diamond. I reside in Pima County. I have been a resident for 47 years, and I live currently in your district Supervisor I'd like, first of all, to congratulate the board on the appointments to the Community Law Enforcement Partnership Commission to oversee a portion of the Operation Stone Garden operation. And I am referring Mr. Valdez to a letter, an email that I received from your office last week in response to an email I had sent urging you not to change your vote on the acceptance of that grant. I'm not here to relitigate that issue, but I am here to urge the board to really make sure that these conditions are given teeth and that your oversight of the use of these funds and the operations of the Sheriff's Department in this regard is a robust oversight and one that really works. And I wanted to mention particular three points that were in your email, sir. Collection of data so we know what the grant is used for, who is affected in the outcomes, and in that regard, I think you're asking the Sheriff's Department for statistics, for accounting of how the funds are used. I would suggest that an independent auditor needs to be appointed for that purpose. Requiring that there be a written policy guiding all interactions with deputies, et cetera. Well, we heard from Sheriff Napier about his view of policies already in place, and then we heard from the ACLU representative, Mr. Peard, where the actions on the ground appeared to seriously contradict Sheriff Napier's policies. So I think that some robust oversight, not only that there be written policies, but that they're followed, is really important here. And finally, I think that the Partnership Commission, Law Enforcement Partnership Commission's scope ought to be expanded, not only to include investigation into racial profiling, but into some of the other abuses that Mr. Peard's letter talked about, and specifically about the unlawful presence of Sheriff's Department deputies at Border Patrol crossings.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
As I'm unable to respond to call to the public, I would welcome Mr. Diamond, please call my office, and we can talk about it in greater length.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very well. I don't think we've seen any answers for the Sheriff's Department yet, have we? No, and they said it was going to be in one week, but two weeks, again, sorry. Our next speaker is going to be Paul Parisi. Thank you for being here, Paul. Always a pleasure to talk with you. You have a great nature about you, so thank you for spending your time here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Paul Parisi. I'm with the organization called For Tucson, and we seek biblical solutions to solve problems. But here, I'm putting a different hat on, and that's for the National Day of Prayer Committee for Pima County. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your long support and having a proclamation every year like you're going to do this year. I've got notification, and I can't thank you enough for that. But we're going to have breakfast on National Day of Prayer, which is May 3rd. It's always the first Thursday of the month of May, and it's going to be at Grace to the Nation's Church at 6810 East Pima Street, and I'd like to invite the board personally as my guests. Just send me an email to RSVP, but it's open for the entire community, no matter what faith you are, no matter how you believe. The most important thing we could do is pray for our government, is pray for you as elected officials, and to pray for our city and our county, and that we have the blessing of the Lord, and I hope you do come to that, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Paul. Our next speaker is going to be Christopher Cole. Mr. Cole, thank you for spending your time here with us again, and please give us your name for the record, and again, appreciate you being here.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Christopher Cole. I am Chair of the Pima County Libertarian Party. In my background, I was for 16 years a manager and a supervisor, and those are two different jobs. A manager manages things, a supervisor supervises people. You don't do either job very well. A few years ago, I suggested that you take all of the projects and all of the programs that you have and prioritize them. If you've got 100 projects, 100 programs, number them, one to 100, no duplicates, no 1A, 1B, and so forth. That way, you will know where you need to spend your money, and it's good management procedure. It works. It works millions of times a day throughout this country, but I seriously doubt you're going to do it. First off, if you do that, you're not going to be able to connive to get your cronies' projects pushed where they shouldn't be, up high on the list. You're not going to be able to tell your constituents, oh, yes, I'm all in favor of this project of yours. It's going to be the number one priority. Meanwhile, you're thinking to yourself, yeah, right, putting a stoplight at the intersection of Speedway and Grant? Duh, how stupid is that?
Speedway doesn't intersect with.
I know it doesn't. That was the joke.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Yeah, but really, you need to do that. That way, you know where to spend your money, and you're not going to be wasting, at last count, I understand it's over $40 million on a balloon toy project, not only the buildings and the outdoor square dance pad, but all of the roads that got built and improved for that instead of roads that need the repair much worse and will do much more for keeping jobs in Pima County. Prioritize, people, prioritize. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next speaker is going to be Jerry Altobani. Ms. Altobani, thank you for being here today. You come to all our meetings. We appreciate your time.
So, good morning, Chairman Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Altobani. I live in Oaxaca Valley. I received my property bill, tax bill, and was shocked. Apparently, Mr. Huckleberry and three of you who voted for him and increased his wages don't like seniors. We are on fixed incomes, some have even come close to losing their homes, especially those over 75 years of age. You know, I learned a lot on the radio on my way down here all the time, and now I know why my taxes keep going up. They mentioned over three pages full of Mr. Huckleberry's favorite employees by name who are receiving and make over $90,000, $100,000, $2,000 a year, and that doesn't even include benefits. So, let's see. There are some employees who, what they do is they check dead people. They make over $100,000. No wonder the sheriffs who have not received their raises are not getting them. Then we have the woman, Mia, who complained about her streets in two neighborhoods, and surprisingly, Mr. Huckleberry found a way to fix those streets. Well, a page of employees who make over $100,000 a year is transportation, who have not fixed the majority of our roads for over 30 years. Maybe we need to take some of the HERF funds, which is the gas tax, not the gas tax, but the license tax, and I guess it's the gas tax, too, to take some of the HERF funds designed to fix our roads. Oh, wait a minute, transportation is taking our HERF funds and not repairing roads, the majority of the roads. This is amazing. How many occasions Mr. Huckleberry finds money to fix things he wants fixed? Apparently, our taxes are going to Mr. Huckleberry's favorite employees. Pages and pages of over $90,000, $100,000, $200,000. Mr. Huckleberry needs to remember we are not his private money tree and live within his budget and not keep raising the budget, and perhaps retire and let a younger, smarter person take over and help the taxpayers. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much, Ms. Altobani. Appreciate that. Younger, smarter, but not better-looking Chuck, I don't know. Edward Sizak, please, you're next. Thank you for being here, Edward. Appreciate your comments, and we appreciate the time you spend with us here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Still Edward Sizak, your hopefully favorite troublemaker. I don't know about that part, though. At the last meeting two weeks ago, there's a lot of lively discussion about the Stone Garden grants, their impacts on the Sheriff's Department, militarization of police and law enforcement, impacts on minority communities. Sheriff Napier argued these grants were needed in order to combat drug trafficking across the Mexican border. I would like to point out that most opioid addiction does not start with illicit drugs on the black market. It starts because of overuse and abuse of legally obtained prescription drugs. These are powerful and useful substances. I'm glad they exist for times when people are severely injured and need the strong pain relief that these medicines can provide. But opiate abuse and addiction shouldn't be, in my opinion, a law enforcement issue. It is and should remain, or become perhaps, one of public and mental health, and I don't agree with the continued reliance on an increasingly militarized law enforcement staff to tackle these issues. The costs of prosecution, of police staff, of lost talent and wages because of people thrown in jail and given criminal records are simply too damn high compared with the cost of treatment. One speaker pointed it out last week meeting. Incis Therapeutics, a Scottsdale-based firm, spent $500,000 to defeat the marijuana initiative Prop 205 in the ballot last election. They are also one of the largest producers of the ultra-potent synthetic opiate fentanyl, and based on recent reports, just received FDA approval to continue with tests of synthetic cannabinoids. I guess marijuana is too dangerous, but when it's synthetic, patented, and can be sold for their private profit, the substance is okay. So what I'm getting at is if the war on drugs by means of law enforcement crackdowns were going to work, we'd have won by now. We haven't won. It's time to consider alternative methods to combat drug use and abuse, and I think it starts by working to decriminalize, to de-stigmatize, and to open the avenues available for health treatment and counseling within the community and the county. Shame to the supervisors for promoting more of the same failed policies in Pima County. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Our next speaker is going to be Crystal Casnov. Crystal, please, thank you for coming here, and you're in good company, and you've got three minutes, please.
I am, thank you. My name is Crystal Casnov. I'm the Executive Director for the Tucson's January 8th Memorial Foundation. I'm here this morning, I'm actually the Executive Director, for another two and a half weeks. We are very proud to say that the community has stepped up and privately funded nearly all of the memorial. It's just been amazing. And Chairman Elias, Supervisors, and Mr. Huckleberry, the Pima County staff, it has been my honor to work with you all, and I wanted to thank you for really taking to heart what this memorial is going to do for the community and to celebrate the way that we can come together regardless of political differences, to really share a voice of civil discourse, to teach our kids in the future and our grandkids. And your staff has been fantastic, and I just want to say thank you also to Tom Burke, Lisa Josker, Linda Mayrow, Jan Lesher. You know, we might not all have the same political backgrounds, but when we face tragedy, we can come together, and we've seen this community do it, and we're seeing that again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Crystal. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is going to be Albert Lanin. Mr. Lanin, thank you for being here and spending your time with us. Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Albert Lanin. I live in Picture Rocks. You'll remember that I filed a formal complaint pursuant to the Regulatory Bill of Rights on January 2nd. I and others have been adversely affected by the county administrator and his staff misusing taxpayer dollars over the past five years to promote an Interstate 11 route through the Avra Valley in blatant violation of County Resolution 2007-343. I finally received a response, a month and a half late, but I got it. My complaint was dismissed, but it was dismissed by the person it was brought against, County Administrator Charles Huckleberry. That is despite the law, which states, and I quote, "Any Pima County officer or employee who has a substantial interest in any decision of Pima County to make the interest known in the county's official records and to refrain from any participation in an official capacity in the decision." As to who should receive and review complaints, Arizona Revives Statute 111608, which the dismissal cites, is clear and unambiguous and of general applicability. Quote, "The Board of Supervisors shall receive complaints concerning ordinances, regulations, substantive policy statements, or county practices alleged to violate this article. The Board of Supervisors may review, et cetera, may hold hearings regarding the allegations, may recommend actions," end quote. 111608 defines rule as, quote, "A county statement of general applicability that implements, interprets, or prescribes law or policy, or describes the procedure or practice requirements of a county. Rule includes prescribing fees or the amendment or repeal of an existing rule," end quote. That perfectly describes the continuing willful violations of 2007-343, opposing any new highway in Pima County, and especially in the San Pedro or Avra Valleys. To insist on a narrow and self-serving interpretation of the Regulatory Bill of Rights, as the county administrator does, ignores the obvious fact that we are regulated all over the place, to the taxes we pay, the speeds we drive, our zoning, raising chickens, off-street parking, the signs we put up, waste disposal, annoying noises, and so on and so forth. Read the county code. It's not just my opinion. Law professionals agree. The county administrator dismissal said, "The county's only role in the current Department of Transportation study is to provide review and comment, yet his campaign for an Avra Valley I-11 began three years before the ADOT study, and his columns and quotes in the press advocate solely for what we call the Huckleberry Highway." I've given you the quotes and citations. It is way past time for our elected officials to do their job, to hold your employee accountable. It is way past time to prove to us that you are capable of enforcing your own policies. Mr. Barber earlier called for transparency, accountability, and following the rules. I hope you were listening.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you spending your time with us today. Our next speaker is going to be Ken Scoville. Mr. Scoville, how are you doing? Please give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes, and once more, it's nice to see you again, sir.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry, I'm here today on two issues, and one is a historic preservation issue, since I've been involved with historic preservation and education for 30-plus years. And just for you to be aware of it, and it's actually the original historic owner was the Falbe residence. I submitted an application to clerk with photographs and things about it, and it's just changed hands, and the new owner is proceeding properly with all the documentation for demolition. And I just wanted, I originally came here this morning to sort of advocate and ask for some kind of incentive or some thoughts about how we might encourage the owner to do some type of adaptive reuse. The property is currently zoned for CR1. It's about 9.6 acres, and I've been communicating with Cultural Resources several different times, and communicated with the owner, and he has no desire for any incentives or anything like this. He's doing the proper paperwork, and it's being sent up to State Historic Preservation Office, so it looks like it's headed towards demolition. It was actually constructed in 1931 in what was called the Rancho Palo Verde Development, which was where we were eliminating the desert and putting in citrus trees, and it represents the other very early historic development in the Foothills area, John Murphy and Helen Murphy, and Catalina Foothills, and this over farther to the west. So, I would still want you to be aware of it, the actual address for today is 900 West Orange Grove. So it's obviously, I don't know what's going in for rezoning or what they're. rezoning or what they're going to do, but I wish you to be aware of that. And it's been abused some, but if you look through the pictures, it's still a very solid, interesting, unique building, about 3,000 square feet, and it is in Supervisor Miller's area. The other thing that I'd like to sort of thank the board for a little bit, I'm always amazed at the diversity of human opinions and thoughts, and having been in education, and now I actually teach at a college level, on the U.S. Constitution and Arizona Constitution history. So I always find it interesting when I go in front of a representative board and listen to all the different concerns. So I'm actually here to thank you for another historic preservation effort that maybe you haven't thought of, and maybe you have, that on March 17th, the celebration, the connection with the Loop Trail that runs along all the watercourses. And again, because I'm tremendously interested in historic preservation, realizing that all the early waterways were the first pathways for native people, and even when Father Kino was here in the 1690s, going along the Santa Cruz, which would eventually be part of the Camino Real, or if you think about the Gila Trail, and all of that. So we're actually celebrating that historic connection about how all the other people that have gone along those riverbanks and were following their footpaths and so on. I think I'm supposed to be a little bit of a guest speaker out there, so thank you very much for that endeavor too.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate all your work. Our next speaker is William Yoey. There you are, sir. Thank you for being here, spending your time with us here this morning. If you could give us your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is William Yoey. Just put this away a little bit. My name is William Yoey. I live in Supervisor Miller's district, and I'm actually representing a group called Indivisible Southern Arizona. I think everybody here has heard of us. We're very active in progressive causes, which means we're interested in social, more or less taking care of people a little bit better than certain areas of government can. And I've been in government, I've been in Huckleberry, or rather, excuse me, Supervisor, not Supervisor, excuse me. Chuck Huckleberry's seat, easier to do that. I was administrator in Colorado. I've been in county, tribal, and municipal government. And I know the hot seat he's in there, and I know all the grief he gets from above and down below. But what I'm trying to do is try to figure out a little bit more transparency, how things are going in the county, how actually you have different things, for example, Stone Garden, twelve years Stone Garden's been around, and I was just curious of the actual accountability of funds, how you actually looked at the different procedures of how to vote on this. Again, I'm not making any accusatory action. I'm just curious how it works, because being an old government worker and trying to see how things are done a little bit differently down here. I spent many a year as an intern, listening to how Supervisors, we, little commissioners up there in Colorado, operate. So that's basically what we're trying to do. We're trying to do things for the public. We have people all the way from PhDs in environmental science and in landscape architecture, down to people that don't have much education, but they're interested in helping people out. And we're looking at other areas and how we can actually take care of the people, again, for the county and the different towns, because there is some epidemic of racism here. I volunteer up at Kit Peak. I've seen it as far as it goes, and being a white guy, I've never really had to have much of that, but I've seen it, gone to my friends that are Hispanic, and actually Indian. So that's what I want to see, is how things actually are operating here at the county level, and I'd be interested in finding more information. So if Mr. Huckleberry can show me where I can be enlightened and find out how you people operate, I'd be more than willing to listen to. So thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker is going to be Roger Score. Mr. Score, thank you for being here, and appreciate the time that you've spent here down with us. You have three minutes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Roger Score, and I'm here to address the issue. A lot of people are talking to me, and they go, they're coming here to inform you of what you're doing wrong. And I need to let them know. They're not doing it wrong. This is the goal. They know your streets aren't getting fixed. They know it's crumbling. LA County is currently 1.8 billion in debt, has homeless people sleeping on the streets. That is the goal. That's the direction they take you. If you look out front of this place, on the Veterans Memorial, we have homeless people sleeping out there. I go by, I talk to the homeless, I interview them. I put up videos of them. The one lady that sleeps on our Veterans Memorial has been in this country for nineteen years and has not gotten her citizenship. What has America done for? Got her three husbands. She don't have no more. She's been married three times. She has a drug problem, an alcohol problem. She ain't got a job, because she told me she ain't picking your vegetables. She wants a government job for thirty dollars an hour. And talk about break up her family. Her two, our seventeen-year-old twin boys, they ain't got their citizenship either, by the way. They live with their mom and dad. But her mom and dad won't even let her live with them. They put her out on the street. See, our roads aren't ever going to get fixed, because you know we'll pay more taxes for roads. You try to deplete our Sheriff's Department, so we don't even have security in our homes. You fight against the sheriff, who's supposed to protect us, but you don't want to fund them. Venezuela is not a Democrat failure. They eat their dogs there, their cats there. The people have no power. They have nothing left. They've been stripped of everything. Venezuela is a Democrat progressive success story. You can't be dumb enough to run a county this bad. It has to be done with intent. You can't be dumb enough to have our roads crumbling and hand the Giffords shrine down there, over twenty million dollars' worth of our money, to give it to the balloon to nowhere, to Mark Kelly, Gifford's husband, to give it to Don Diamond to build his developments. There's no way anybody's that stupid. I just don't believe it. So you're being told to do this by your puppet masters, to drive us into the dirt. And you can go ahead and steal our money, but don't think we're dumb enough to believe it. I refuse to sit here and say, "I believe you're that dumb." Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Have a good day. We have one last speaker. That's Mia Tittle. Thank you for being here. Appreciate your time, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mia Tittle. It seems like every time I come up here, people leave. I have that effect on the board, I think. I had something to say that was important for Mr. Huckleberry to hear, but I hope that he's listening from the back. I received an email from Mr. DeBonis stating that my complaint was rejected because it didn't apply to the Regulatory Bill of Rights under which I submitted it. At his suggestion, I'm resubmitting it today. I've removed the references to the Bill of Rights, and I hope you'll reevaluate it based on the substance and not throw it out because of the way in which I submitted it. Hope you can get it to the right department head to do so. The other reason I'm here is to ask you to think about this again. It's in your best interest to settle this without it going further. These allegations don't really look good for the board, your public officials, and it's kind of hard to prove allegations of bias unless there's a direct statement of bias, as in this case, along with the other obvious open meeting violations. This is just basic stuff. I'm not an attorney, I'm not even political, I'm not Republican. This is just basic civil rights, so I'm asking you to please reconsider your steps. Maybe you think your attorneys will make this right in court. No high-power attorneys can make this right. This is just basic civil rights, and the evidence is insurmountable. And I don't want it to go that way. I don't want to have to bring out these details of the complaint over and over. So let's negotiate. You can change it. It can be no big deal, and that's in the best interest of the board. Administrator Huckleberry, hopefully you're listening. I heard about this memo that you proposed for the repair of Moondance, which is my subdivision, Moondance Roads. And don't get me wrong, we would love to have our roads fixed. That's why I'm here in the first place, but I'm wondering, when did you come up with this idea? Is it like you had a dream, and all of a sudden, Moondance must be fixed? Like District 1 must be included. We've got to fix Moondance. That would be great for us to have Moondance fixed, but it's not the main point. This is about fair voting for all of District 1. So I'm asking you to be flexible, to paint with an eraser and make a change. When we get older, not that you're older, I'm in this too, when we're young, we go with flowers in our hair, but then we get set in our ways. We have our coffee at a certain time. We do everything at a certain time. We're used to vote the way we've always done it. We vote along the way we always vote, along our party lines, and that can be okay some of the time, but not in this case. So I'm asking you to be flexible and change. And that's, I just want the board to go in the right direction.
Thank you very much. That concludes all the cards I have submitted for, call to the audience. It's now eleven o'clock. We're going to take a short break and give our folks' typing a chance to rest their fingers, and we'll be back in a few minutes. We'll go ahead and get going. I'd like to call back to order the March 6 meeting, the 2018 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We're going to move to the addendum, items seven and eight. I'll go ahead and move both those items. Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Supervisor Miller.
I just want to say that I'm going to object to both of these, and it is because of the fact that I object to the overall prioritization of this project ahead of our roads and other core services. It is nothing to do with your foundation, but that is why I'm going to object. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, these monies are not from the general fund. They're from private sources. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I understand that, but it was, it took the refurbishment of the courthouse, which is public money, and fixing that whole building up, et cetera, to make this happen, and this is an integral part of that. Thank you.
Were those two things combined, Mr. Huckleberry? I don't remember it quite that way. I don't remember it quite that way.
Mr. Chairman, no, they were not. The refurbishment of the courthouse is for a completely separate purpose. The actual expenditure with regard to the memorial is zero from the county. And it's located on county property, but it's property that's common to the courthouse grounds.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments from board members? If not, any objections?
I object.
One noted for Supervisor Miller. Item passes four to one. We're back on to the regular agenda, and we're on item 8, Library District Board. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. I thank the library for all their work on this, too.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller?
I had a couple of questions on this. I see that the speakers are not going to be required to obtain a permit unless that jurisdiction requires it, which I think is fair and reasonable. One of the things that I...it's on page 2 of 3 of the policy 32.11, where it states that speakers cannot conduct activities under a Pima County Public Libraries' covered porches. My concern there is that we have seniors, disabled children, that are out there in the summertime that do these types of activities, and they're doing petitions for anything from candidates to whatever cause they're working on. And I think we should allow them to be under the cover of that instead of out in the open sun if you're...if you're in one of those categories. And that's...in that policy.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Huckleberry, please.
Those words, "or under P...C...P...L libraries' covered porches," deleted in this version?
Okay, okay, so you took them out of it, so it wasn't identical to the last? Okay. Because that's what I got in my agenda prep, so that did change. Okay? And the other concern in limiting the number of speakers? That's up to the library staff, so if people go there to express their First Amendment right, wouldn't that be a violation if you went up and told somebody you could speak, but you can't? Wouldn't that be a violation of their First Amendment right?
Mr. Huckleberry?
And that's also on page 2 of 3. And I was...
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I believe the language is really to ensure that not disturbing the library operations or safety. And I think all the language says is if the number of speakers exceeds the space available, they can limit the number of speakers based on a first-come, first-served basis, which is how it's handled today.
Okay, so then they could let them rotate in and out?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I'd like to divide the question. Number 7 is a potential conflict for me. And then items 3 and 4. I'd like to have separate discussion and vote on those two.
So 7 is a conflict?
Yeah.
Amen. Very good. Okay, in that case, I'll move the remainder of consent. So this is all of consent, minus items 3, 4, and 7.
Second.
Objections? Motion carries. We're on to item 3 of the addendum.
I'll move the item.
Okay, on item number 3, this one is for the 3 and 4, wastewater department. And my question on this one is, what is the difference? They're going to spend $99,000 to go paperless. And I understand that, because there's a lot of transactions, so they're getting a mobile app. What is the cost differential between the paper system that you have now and the paperless
Chairman Elias and Supervisor Miller, first on a paper cost, you know, we produce about 10,000 work orders a month, which is paper that includes maps and pictures that our crews utilize when they go out in the field to do the maintenance and repair work in the conveyance area. So paperless, we'd eliminate over 1,500 pounds of paper, but the real savings or benefit is in efficiency. Right now, crews have to come back and spend desk time and paper time filling out and closing out work orders. And having them have the ability to do all that through a mobile system, a mobile application, at a minimum, we're expecting, you know, 10%, 15% efficiency savings, which has a tremendous value, much more than the 99,000 that we're planning to spend.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll move approval of this item.
We've already got a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Any further discussion? Objections? Hearing none. We're on to item 4.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Chairman, this one I have questions on. We had two qualified respondents. This was based on a solicitation based on qualifications. We had two qualified respondents, and I believe it was open to have multiple, and you chose one. And I was curious why you only chose the one. It appears both of them were deemed qualified.
Chairman, Supervisor Miller, there is two respondents in this situation only. The second one was not declared non-responsive, but their qualifications were very low. They had a very low score. Based on their submittal, they submitted to us, it did not show they had any proven experience with elevators for people. They only had experience with elevators for moving equipment and mining. So even though we scored them and did not declare them non-responsive before that process, it was too low to consider them actually qualified to do this work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 7, Supervisor Miller says this presents a potential conflict of interest for her. So if you could please excuse yourself in the room?
Mr. Chairman? I just looked at the item. The seller is Pima County, the buyer is City of Tucson, there is no conflict. They only use the word Raytheon as the location.
I was wondering about that, but I wanted to give the benefit of the doubt to Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman, and I'll let Supervisor Miller judge for herself. This is land that is correct in the transactional, but it will be used for Raytheon for the new entries to Raytheon in the South.
Okay, so...
I'll move the item.
A second. A motion and a second. The chair will make note that Supervisor Miller has removed herself from the room. And any further discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're back on item 10 on the regular agenda. County Administrator, this is the budget hearing scheduled for 2018 and 19.
I'll move the item.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to assessor, item 11, Distribution of State of Arizona Highway Patrol...highway property rent funds.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Item 12 is annual vehicle exemptions.
I'll move the item.
Motion and a second. Any objections?
Mr. Chairman, do these include all county employees or just the Sheriff Department vehicles? Are these all vehicles?
Yes.
It's all county vehicles that are...okay.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, it's all county departments. My guess is that 90% or more are sheriff vehicles.
Okay, all right. Then I'm going to object. Thank you.
Okay, any objections?
I object.
One noted for Supervisor Miller. We're on to hearings, Development Services. Item 13, Hearing Conditional Use Permit.
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us in opposition to this item at this time? In opposition? If not, I'm going to move to close the public hearing and approve subject to standard and special conditions. And I'm negligent in not introducing Councilman John Post, who is here today on this item from Morana. Welcome. I hope you've enjoyed your stay with us.
I'll say...
All right. You want to make a comment? Before we...we have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing, but we have not passed it yet, so I'll allow you to speak, sir.
I would like to make a comment, John Post. I would like to congratulate you on your processes for...in your development services and the great staff that you have. It's been a very good experience for me, having done this multiple other times in another jurisdiction, and I just want to stand here and congratulate you on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Post. Appreciate it.
We rarely hear kind words. It's always welcome.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 13, case number P-17 CU-00016, subject to standard and special conditions and close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to items 14 and 15. These are rezoning ordinances, including ordinances 2018-3 and -4.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
If no one wishes to speak on these two items, I will move to close the public hearing and approve ordinance 2018-3, Tucson Linda Vista 20 Limited Partnership, North Shannon Road rezoning, and 2018-4, P-17 RZ-00005 Golden Rule Enterprise LLC. Second.
A motion and a second to approve items 14 and 15 and ordinances 2018-3 and 4. Close the public hearing?
I did.
Okay, good.
I think I did.
Any further discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We have item 16, which is a hearing with a traffic resolution, 2018-14.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Christie?
Is there anyone present to speak against this resolution? If not, I'd like to close the hearing and ask that we pass resolution number 2018-14, permitting the temporary closure of portions of Pistol Hill Road from Colossal Cave Road to Old Spanish Trail in Pima County, and on the March 11th, for the Colossal Cave Road Race.
Second.
Motion and a second for item 16's approval, including resolution 2018-14. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to the addendum now. Item 6 is the meeting schedule for the supervisors.
I'll move the item. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to Grants and Data Office. Item 9, Fosco Yaki Tribe State Shared Revenue Program, including resolution 2018-15.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the item.
Motion and a second to approve item 9 on the addendum, including resolution 2018-15. Objections? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, on items 10 through 16, does anybody wish to divide the question?
I'd like to vote on item 12 separately, please.
Okay, I'll remove then item 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items 10, 11, 13, 14, and 15?
And 16.
And 16. Very good. I was...I thought I heard that, but I just want to make sure. Any discussion? Objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 12.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the item.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
The reason I pulled this item is this is apparently an individual who we've contracted with through another company to do finance reports out of our finance, budget, and payroll applications. This individual, I'm looking for the company, he works currently for Silicon Alley Group. And now they're setting up another agreement with him under a new company of which he is the only employee. And it's for $150,000 annually, so it's two years at $300,000. My first question is, why haven't we hired or trained an employee to do these reports for us rather than outsourcing that?
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, and I'll let Mr. Burke expand on this, but I think you'll find that in the CGI systems that we have for our finance requires some very specialized expertise in report writing, expertise that we have not been able to obtain within our information technology department. And therefore, the most expedient method of actually obtaining the reports is to contract with a subject matter expert, which is this individual. And he's been in this process since 2011 in that transition, and so changing company from time to time is pretty common with information technology specialist.
The concern I have here is that we did have, I see, we had about $6.5 million. We spent a total of, for this whole planning system, about $24 million, and we had $6.5 million for maintenance and support for 10 years and professional services. Of $12.6 million, which I assume includes training on the various elements of this package. I know I've been involved in transitioning to different software packages and companies that I've worked for, and they always include training to get people up to speed on how to use these applications, how to interface or even develop interfaces with various programming methods to be able to extract the data that you need for reporting purposes. And if he's already been in this for seven years, that is, to me, we should have developed that expertise or hired him directly or made sure that we got some employees here trained locally, because extracting data out of a system isn't that hard. You've just got to have the skills. And I assume we have programmers in the IT department that have skill sets that are able to extract data out of databases. It's nothing new. So my concern is, why hasn't anybody been trained rather than paying this amount of money every year? And did we...do we have a non-compete clause with the last company that he worked for, Silicon Alley Group? If we don't have that, we need to get that before we approve this, because I know how most of these companies worked. We were held hostage by an individual who jumped from company to company, and we ended up in a company that I previously worked for, getting sued by the company that he jumped from. So I'd like to know if we do in fact have that non-compete. Information clarified?
Yep. Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, a couple of points, and I think Mr. Burke can clarify the non-compete, and I assume it wouldn't be on this agenda if there was a non-compete for a different firm. I think you also have to understand that this is gross, $150,000. If that was an employee, we'd be paying about $80,000, because this includes a person has to basically pay all of his medical insurance, his social security, his withholding taxes, and his retirement.
Mm-hmm. I do. I understand that, but I'm just very concerned after this many years that we haven't figured out how to do this, we haven't got employees trained, because it should...when you're relying on one sole employee to be able to do that, whether it's a contract employee or an in-house employee, you're putting yourself at risk to be held hostage by that individual. And I've seen it many times when you migrate to these new applications. So I would just like to see, you know, some in-house expertise developed and multiple employees with this type of expertise. Thank you, and I know there's a...you haven't called the question yet, so I'll wait for
Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections?
I'm going to object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. Motion carries four to one. That concludes today's agenda and addendum. Thank you all for being here. This meeting is hereby adjourned.